Oh, wow.
It had to do with a certain coach.
Oh, is that right?
Yes. I wonder if that gave fires from a million places.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, individual, deliberating justice for all, all.
Good evening. Please note that all the councilors are here. At this time, we're going to have, except Patrick, I'm sorry, except Councilor DiLorenzo, I'm so used to him here. Welcome back, our Council Marshal, Millie. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by the Bloomfield Beautification Committee to the Green Machine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Councilwoman, Town Councilwomen. I am Sharon Mann. I chair the Bloomfield Beautification Committee. The town sponsors an Adopt a Spot program to encourage residents and businesses to help maintain our public gardens. It's simple. The BBC offers locations in our community that need a little TLC to keep them looking good from April to October. We have written plans with costs available. Residents or businesses choose one of these spots and either write a check to have the work done under our guidance, or they participate in the process of planting and maintaining. A sign is displayed, like you see here, to let everyone know who is responsible for the Adopt a Spot location. You get the satisfaction of giving back to our community, and the public gets to enjoy the beauty you create. Tonight, I would like to recognize some citizens from our community whose history goes back three generations. Since 1974, the Green Machine has earned a reputation as one of the premier residential and commercial landscape companies in Connecticut. Richard Zito joined the Green Machine in 1975, and he became a partner in 1982, and since 2000 has been the sole owner. Today, it has become a family-run business with all three of Richard's sons working for the company. The experience and knowledge of the team at the Green Machine allows them to meet all your landscape needs. They do. Lawn care, landscaping, hardscaping, snow management, they do it all, and they're a local business. And that's why we feel so fortunate to have them volunteering in adopting two locations in our town. But there's more. Greg Zito is one of Millie Zito's youngest grandchildren. She passed away when he was only five, but he still has the memories of gardening with her. Millie's passion for the outdoors and much of that was passed down to her son, Richard, the owner. They completed the Master Gardener Program together in 1994. She was a charter member of the Bloomfield Beautification Committee, and one of her proudest moments was being named 1995 Citizen of the Year by the Bloomfield Civitam Club. Greg believes that much of what his father does is in memory of his parents. Richard's father was a builder, and in addition to building many houses in town, he also built and donated the original warming shed that was at Philly Pond Park. In Greg's own words, quote, "I think it is safe to speak for both my brother Ricky and Stephen when I say that our parents and grandparents have passed down an appreciation and enjoyment for the outdoors. And I feel it's safe for me to say that the next generation, Ricky and Stephen, continue that dedication to our environment and to our town." So I'm going to start with a special garden that was donated in memory of Millie Zito, their grandmother. It's located at the corner of Bloomfield and Park Avenue. Ricky redesigned the garden in 2009 to have specimen evergreens and shrubs to complement the annual flowers that the BBC plants every summer and fall. You're seeing this in the fall, so you're missing out all the color that was there through the year, but there's a wonderful Japanese maple, and there's boxwoods to the back, and they really took care in making it a very special planting. Okay, next. There's also ornamental evergreens. I wasn't sure what this was. Is it a weeping Norway spruce? Yes. Okay. So again, a very special ornamental shrub put into our landscape in the center of town. If you go a little further, well, first, I want to show you one more picture, next. And this is the lovely plaque that was dedicated to Millie. It's called the Millie Zito Memorial Gardens, and if you ride by on Park, the corner of Park and Bloomfield Avenue, you'll see this wonderful rock under the Japanese maple with that plaque. And then, if you go further down, up Mountain Avenue at the corner of Simsbury and Loffler Roads, there's a long island which Greg redesigned after taking his Master Gardener certification last year, finishing his course. And although, you can go to the next picture, right now, that you'll see it's kind of died back for the winter, but there's ornamental grasses, daylilies, coriopses, lavender, and it's quite colorful in the summer and in the spring and even up until, like, the frost. So it's a great place when you're riding by and you have to stop at the stop sign, you can see what they've done. And of course, the one thing that they have to lament every year, and that's why we're so happy to have them help us out, is that vehicles will often ride up on the curb. They can't stop that. Snow goes there in the winter, but they're there every year, helping us keep that island At the corner of Blue Hills Avenue and Cottage Grove is the third garden that they take care of. This is a gateway into our community at the corner, like I said, of Blue Hills Avenue and Cottage Grove. The Green Machine designed, donated, and installed, and they maintain the welcome-to-Bloomfield landscape that welcomes visitors to our community. We are grateful for their commitment and support and honor them tonight. Greg and Ricky, please come up so I can give you your awards. This award says, "Bloomfield Adopt a Spot would like to thank the Green Machine with appreciation and gratitude for your donation, plants, and labor to maintain these three gardens, these three town public gardens." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on Saturday, man alive, it was a cold, cold Saturday. There was no warmth to be found. It was a crisp, crisp Saturday morning. That's how cold it was. But on Saturday, our Bloomfield Warhawks, and I shouldn't even say on Saturday because we were proud of you all before Saturday, because I did contact the coach before the game was Saturday, and said that the council wanted to make sure for you to know how much we appreciate what you do, the coach, the students, the parents, the commitment that you have to Bloomfield. But on Saturday, you all showed what the best of Bloomfield looked like. There was a parent on the sideline that said, "That's right, go ahead, introduce yourselves." That was like before the last play of the game. And I posted it on Facebook, because now you introduce yourselves as champions, and we are so very proud of you. So on tonight, it is my pleasure to present this citation to the Bloomfield High School football team. If you all could just stand up, come on. Coach Outlaw, assistant coaches Damian, Ruben, Peter, Derek, Kelly, Ann Garfield, who worked extremely hard to help bring the team to its first-class S title victory since 2015. Am I the only one that's excited about this?
No.
I know that we're in council chambers, but am I the only one excited about this?
Warhawks.
Warhawks, that's right. We wish you the best of luck, and we will be rooting for you every step of the way as you work to guide the team through the championship games, year after year after year after year, because Bloomfield is here, and every team hereafter will have to deal with the Bloomfield Warhawks. No matter what happens from this day forward, they will have to deal with the champions. Keep up the good work, and know that the entire community of Bloomfield residents and parents applaud your tireless effort. Dated at Bloomfield, Connecticut, this 10th day of December 2018, Suzette DeBeetham, Prime Mayor, and the entire Bloomfield Town Council, we celebrate the Warhawks. So we're going to get a picture. We're going to get a picture. Come on. Come on, team and coaches.
You're not going to let the coach say something?
Oh, yes. After we get our picture, you see everybody's over there waiting. Come on, team, come on. All of you guys, you all make it happen, every last one of you.
Champions.
No.
That's big, that's huge, that.
Never seen us.
I know.
We made it, it's on the table.
So we're going to have the head coach come and say something.
Thank you, council, for having us. My name is Ty Outlaw. I'm the head football coach for Bloomfield High School, the proud head football coach. I'm so proud of these guys because the sacrifice that they put out is, has been amazing. They set out for this journey about eight months ago, and this was the final destination that every high school team, every high school football team wants, to be a state champion. They've played in pouring down rain when it was northeastern. They played in the snow. They played in the freezing cold. They played in the mud bowl and went down to Ansonia and beat Ansonia, who hasn't lost on their field since, I want to say, like, 2000.
2000.
2000 in the playoffs. And they was an 11-0 team, a very good team, and for them to go down there and have the heart to pull it out, it's a special group. We don't make a single dime off of our games. We don't have a booster club like some of these teams, like New Canaan and Greenwich, but we work with what we have. And I love this town because whenever it's time for our kids to need something, like helmets, we needed helmets earlier this year, well, the town came through. And right now, we're asking for a little help because we don't have a booster club. These guys deserve rings, just like every state champion. We don't have state champion jackets or hats or anything. To be honest with you, we don't have T-shirts. But I could tell you this, we do have a lot of heart, and anybody that faces this Bloomfield football team, not just this year, next year, and it's going to continue, these guys have been busting their tail, not just on the football field, but in school. And I'm so proud of them because they sacrificed not only their friends, they sacrificed their family, their fun, 2K, Fortnite, you know?
Minecraft.
Minecraft. So, you know, I know, and a lot of guys are missing tonight because we played on Saturday, and then a week ago, we played on Sunday, and then they have to go straight to practice, even though football is over, to indoor track, to basketball, and go to practice on Monday. So it's almost like they have no days off. But I just want to say, thank you for having us, and I'm so proud of you guys.
So, how many seniors do we have in the group? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Is that, is there, there's more seniors, right?
Yeah, it's about 11 or 12.
About 11 seniors, okay. So what I'd like for us to do is to be able to put a letter into each of your files that states how much Bloomfield appreciates you, so that when you go to college, the college can know that you come from a good town, and that the town has realized what your sacrifice is and that your town loves you. Now, I'm also going to speak with my colleagues and town manager to see what else we can do for the football team, because you represent us, and you have represented us so well. I know there's players on the team, Mr. Goodison, that's on the honor roll, and that gets his job done scholastically as well as athletically. So I think for the fact that we can applaud you tonight, we should be able to look to do something tangible. So we will definitely have that conversation, Coach, and we will definitely get back in touch with you. And please know that we are truly, main man Miles, we are truly, truly proud. I mean, on Saturday, I don't think I could have been any more proud. Frozen toes in awe of the team and the work that you all did. I don't know how Coach Country was out there in shorts, but he's in shorts one tonight.
I'm freezing right now, and you're just making me a little bit colder, but I thank you all for coming out. We thank you all for coming out.
And the coaches, we know that you all put a lot of work into this as well. We know that you all put a lot of sleepless nights into this, and thank you just seems so inadequate, but we're going to work something out. Thank you so very much. Thank you, parents. Mr. Goodison, thank you all very much. So while the, I know that you guys aren't going to stay for the rest of the meeting, so while the football team files out, we're going to have citizen statements and petitions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Thank you a lot for allowing us to be here. My name is Pat Davis. I reside at Fort Lisa Lane. I'm coming to you guys this evening to speak on behalf of the Alliance for Bloomfield Children. I currently serve as the co-chair, and we've been doing some great things in town, and I think it's very important that you all learn and know more about what the Alliance for Bloomfield Children does. I'm here with my co-chair, who is Jackie McBee, and our coordinator, who is Sheila Crocker. I'm going to have Jackie talk a little bit more about the alliance per se, but I just want you to know that the Alliance for Bloomfield Children, our purpose is to get community engagement. Our purpose is to make sure that our children, ages birth to eight, are healthy, educated, nurtured, and supported by their families and their community. And we are a community, and it's very important that we all understand where alliance is and what we're doing, and the support that we can do together through the alliance along the town council, that we can do to help strengthen our community and especially that population that I mentioned, because as our mantra says, early childhood matters. So it's very important that we understand that early childhood matters, and the only way we can strengthen our community is if we start with the babies. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you, co-chair Davis, and to all the council members. Good evening, and very briefly, want to say hello to the audience as well. My name is Jackie McBee. I am co-chair, as stated. Address is 9K Woodland Avenue here in Bloomfield. If you all will indulge us, we do intend to, as the Alliance for Bloomfield Children, come and report out as well as share with you quarterly, because we want you to be aware of what we're doing so that you, as a community here, and get excited and therefore, and participate with us. What we'd like to share with you is some of what we've been doing over the last quarter, and that is our racial equity conversations in cafes. We have gone throughout the town. We have reached out to all facets. We've gone to members of the early childhood and the directors and staff. We have gone to the leisure center, and we've talked to seniors. We've recently held a cafe over at our farm, and we thank you for those of you who participated. And on yesterday, yeah, it would have been yesterday, this past weekend, we had a conversation, and we were talking about barriers and tearing down walls, that we would all move into a place of, if not being comfortable, then at least opening the door that we would be able to have these conversations. So we want to thank you for allowing us to speak right now, and then our coordinator, if you would come and just share a word of hello or greeting and add to that, and we do thank you.
My name is Sheila Crocker. My address is 26 Briar Lane in the town. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to say hi, and we invite you to be, come a part of the Alliance for Bloomfield Children. We will not be meeting in December. We will meet again in January. We'll meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month, and you are all invited. We meet at First Congregational Church, right in the center of town. So please come and join us in our meetings. Thank you. I'm sorry, 5:30 to 7:30, and we have dinner and childcare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here because I have been a little concerned, because I think the history tells us that the town attorney has been vetted by the town committee and then so noted to the council for appointment. But this current council has taken on the task of appointing the town attorney, and it's becoming a political football. And consequently, as I said, it's become a political football, and I think that it's time that the council get off the pot and make this appointment, because it's better for the town and for the town attorney that we have someone in place with all the things that are before us. So I appreciate the opportunity, and as I said, let's get down to it.
Hi, my name is Bradley Klein. I live at 82 Tower Phil Road here in town. Been paying taxes for 31 years, and my wife graduated, I won't say when, from high school, and our daughter graduated, and so it's cool to be part here. I've recently, I just want to speak very briefly about a new business matter that's going to come up later on the agenda, item 1819-35, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Metropolitan District Commission Resolution Long-Term Control Plan. I don't know if members of the council are aware of it. I'd be happy to forward the letter that was written to Scott Jellison, who's a professional engineer and CEO of the Metropolitan District Commission. The letter is dated December 26, 2017, and it comes from the State Department of Environmental Energy and Environmental Protection. It's a letter from Betsy Wingfield. She's bureau chief of the Bureau of Water Protection and Land Reuse, and it is a devastating indictment of the MDC's long-term control plan. And it basically says, it's seven pages, it's very long, I'll send it to everybody. I don't think you should vote on this resolution endorsing anything that the MDC is doing until you read this letter. It's a devastating indictment of the way in which the MDC, over the last 30, 40 years, has kicked the can down the road, been dumping hundreds of millions of gallons of raw sewage into the rivers, and even its plan now doesn't propose to address the consent agreement for another 30 or 40 years. And it makes it clear that the plan is unacceptable to the DEEP. So I hope that everyone here reads that letter before you vote on that resolution, because we don't, we should not be endorsing what the MDC is doing, because they're not properly planning for environmental management of scarce resources. Thank you.
Tolly Miller, 88 Kenmore Road. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I first want to thank Barbara Ryssner and Ann Wall for their dedication and their service to running the Voters Register Office. I read the article in The Current today, and I'm just really moved by their service to protect democracy in our town with all of the malfeasance that's happened around the country. We should be really proud, and I think that they just set a great example of community service. So thank you, if you guys are watching, but thank you very much. I also wanted to commend Prosser Library and the Alliance for Bloomfield Children for creating events for serious and meaningful discussions about race by Bloomfield citizens. I've attended several of these and have found them all to be really well-run and fully engaging, withstanding them only at some of the events at Prosser. And really, I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, so so glad you are, Jackie. ABC is continuing conversations on race. I recommend them highly to anybody who's heard about them, thought, oh, I'll go, but then you didn't quite get there. I really, really suggest that you do try to get there, because they deepen understanding in our community, and I really think that they're going to lead to new initiatives and policies in town. So I'm very excited, and thank you, ABC. And then finally, I wanted to say thank you to the council for all that you've accomplished in your first year. There are a lot of things, but I don't have enough time to say them, but things like lowering the mill rate, our property taxes, establishing a design review board to oversee future developments in our town, creating effective community outreach through several town hall meetings that have been great, held in locations around Bloomfield. So I really appreciate that. And now you have to fill two critical positions in town government, town manager and town attorney. In local politics, many town appointments are filled through political patronage. This council showed us that you were going to do things differently by initiating an RFP many months ago for town attorney. I understand that this process got stalled, and I also understand that you're now suspending, you're considering suspending choosing a new town attorney until the more critical position of town manager is filled. But I appreciate your commitment to reengage with choosing a town attorney in March, and I do hope that you will continue to welcome feedback and ideas about both of these positions from residents in town. So I just want to thank you for your service and really wish everybody happy holidays. Thanks.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Bloomfield Football Team on winning another state championship. Congratulations to them. I would also, I'd like to say that one thing about Bloomfield- I would also, I'd like to say that one thing about Bloomfield and in regards to the schools is that it's good to see that we always do very well in regards to winning state championships, and that's always a wonderful thing. But also, the main thing is that it's good to see that the academic progression is also there as well. I've always stated that it's one thing to be great in athletics, but it's another thing that's more important to be great in academics, and I think that we're moving in that direction. What I'd like to just speak on briefly is in regards to your agenda item here, in regards to the appointment of the town attorney. I know that last week, the Subcommittee on Administration and Education had a heated debate in regards to whether to postpone the appointment or the moving forward in regards to the appointment of the new town attorney. Let me just say that about a year ago, November 7th, you all were elected, and on the 13th, the week after, you were sworn in, and you had indicated at that time that you wanted to look into appointing, looking into appointing a new town attorney. During that period of time, it's been over a year now, but during that period of time, I'm sure that you weren't expecting that illustrious town manager was planning on retiring, and in that particular instance, there has been that change, I'm sure, in your plans. However, you all have decided, I could say, the Administration and Education Committee has determined that it possibly would be to the best interests of the town to postpone the RFP process at this point in time until the town manager process has been completed to move forward and appoint or look at appointing a town attorney, whether or not it's the same one that we've had, Mark Needleman, or moving forward. It has been stated that, in fact, it seems to be, it looks like my time is up, but if you would permit me, please, to just complete just briefly, and I'll be complete, be brief. Let me just say this, that it's indicated that it's been kind of a political appointment, and we know that it has been that way in the past, but I can say that Joe Merritt and in the meeting there stated at the Subcommittee meeting that it has been a political situation in regards to the appointment coming through the Democratic team as the majority, and he's had his issues with it as a Republican, but he recognizes that our current town attorney has done an excellent job. The town attorney's job is not to direct the council, but to provide advice, to protect the town in its dealings, and it's your job to do what you feel is best for the town. So in that particular instance, I would just like to say that I think that Mark Needleman has done an outstanding job for the town for the past 13 years. We know that he's a town resident, so of course, as all of us, he loves the town and would do the best we can. Oh, thank you so much. And so in that particular instance, I would say that I hope that you all, that you all do what you all feel is best for the town. I know that you will. And thank you very much for your time. Okay?
Counsel business, full business, 1718, yes? I'm sorry.
Counsel Subcommittee.
I'm sorry. Can I have reports on the Subcommittee?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to report for Community Service Subcommittee. The committee met on December 6th at 6:00 PM, and we received various reports from the various committees. And Bloomfield Social and Youth Services reported they distributed 140 tax-giving baskets to Bloomfield families in partnership with local businesses, church organizations, and residents. In addition to that, through our adopted family program, the department will be distributing holiday gift cards to 165 children for Christmas. We still currently have 15 children that needed to be adopted, so if you're watching from home or you're sitting here, please call the Social Youth Services for additional information. If you would like to adopt a child, 860-242-1895. In addition to that, we have the energy, one second, please. The energy system is now open for application. Contact Social and Youth Services to determine if you're eligible. That number is once again, 860-242-1895. In addition to that, Operation Fuel is now assisting income-eligible household with delinquent water bills. Contact the Youth and, contact Social Youth and Services for any additional information. That number, once again, it's 860-242-1895. In addition to that, Youth Services will be hosting a community forum on human trafficking in February 2018. More information is to be followed. In addition to that, we received from Senior Services, there will be a breakfast with Santa this coming Saturday. I don't have the actual date. Do you remember what the time for that?
I don't.
It was 15, what time? I don't have.
I thought it was full already.
It was?
It is full.
It's full, okay. So it's currently full. In addition to that, the committee went into a discussion on various community activities event. The Subcommittee discussed the topic in length in regards to deciding whether or not, we actually decided that the mayor will set up an ad hoc committee to spearhead upcoming community events because that's currently run through our Youth Services, not Youth Services, but our staff is part of spearheading that operation. I think having an independent person to kind of run that would be better for the town. So the mayor will be spearheading that. And that's it for Community Service. On to Administration, Education Subcommittee that was held on December 3rd. We received a report from Human Services Facility. The construction project is currently on schedule and on budget. In regards to Public Works Facility, that project is also scheduled through, is scheduled so far, and I don't have any further updates on it. I did receive a status update on Council Chambers Improvement. The Council Chambers Improvement Project will begin the week of December 17th, and that will be entailed in setting up on the dices, microphone for each station, so instead of using our usual back-and-forth little mics here. So in addition to that, we received a status update from Zoning Light Enforcement. Nothing to update on that. A presentation was presented by Eagle Track. Ms. Nadia Robson gave a brief presentation of the Golden Eagle Track Club and the need for Bloomfield to have a number-one indoor and outdoor track facility, and more to come on that. Under Old Business, we discuss item 19-04, Ordinance on Veterans Tax Exempt. The Subcommittee voted unanimously to accept and recommend to the full council here tonight the veteran tax exemption ordinance. In addition to that, we had discussion, possible action regarding the Tobacco 21. The Subcommittee voted unanimously to recommend to the full council here tonight to adopt the resolution to support Tobacco 21. In addition to that, we had the Farmington River Park update, a status report by Dave Malesko. Currently, there were debates whether or not to continue with the current facility on site, the current house. I know there's debate back and forth. Dave Malesko did present the committee with a comprehensive budget on how much the project would cost for the various phases. I know currently, right now, Phase 1 is 186,000. Phase 2 is 220,000, and the committee will go through the capital improvement plan for consideration for fiscal year 1920 budget cycle. Under New Business, as discussed here tonight, discussion on possible action regarding for a town attorney. The committee had an extensive discussion on this. The committee as a whole, presented by Councilman Diarenzo, felt that with everything that's currently going on within the town, with finding a new town management, I think it would not be responsibly enough to go ahead and make these changes. Obviously, we have differences of opinions on this topic, but I think that the council will make the right decision here tonight to move forward with this. And that's it for my report, Madam Mayor.
Finance, Councilor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My report is very brief because we have not met since the last council meeting. We will tentatively be meeting next Monday at 6:30. However, I think later in the evening you will be making some announcements about the beginning of the town manager search process and citizen involvement, and as a result of that, that meeting might be moved. I haven't had a chance to talk to Finance Director Rowley about that, so stay tuned. We will either be having a meeting next Monday, we either be having a meeting next Monday, a short meeting next Monday, or a meeting sometime later in the month at a different date. Thank you very much.
Public Safety, Councilor McLarry.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met this afternoon. We received some updates from the Police Department and the Fire Department. Stats are currently flat, but please be vigilant as the weather gets cold to not leave your key fob in your car and go in the house while your car warms up because it leaves you open for the rest of your car being taken. So please be mindful of that. BVA is in need of EMTs, so if you would like to volunteer, please, please, please. We're one of the only towns in the state left with a volunteer EMS program, so please go out or contact the Bloomfield Police Department Sergeant White, who is the coordinator there, if you would like to volunteer. You can volunteer, I think, at 17, 16, but you have to have parent consent. You have to have two years of driving experience if you're 16 before you can, 18, excuse me, 18, before you can drive the regs, but you still can become a volunteer. So please reach out and serve your town. As far as the communication system, the police chief gave an update that he met with the consultant today, and he had some very good conversations about the build-out of that program. Over the next couple of weeks, they'll be meeting with the state to discuss how they can tap into the state program to kind of save us some money. So over the next couple of months, they'll be meeting, and we look forward to a report from the police chief and the town manager as it relates to our communication system. Our next scheduled meeting is January 14th at 6:30 PM, Conference Room 5. You're welcome to come out. And that concludes my report from the Public Safety Committee. Thank you.
Committee on Committees and Land Use and Economic Development, Councilor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been no meetings held since our last council meeting, so there's nothing to update. Our next meetings are scheduled for next Monday and Tuesday and may be subject to some rescheduling if matters that Councilman Goff had brought up dictate. But we are scheduled to meet on those dates we have for next week.
Okay. Old Business, 1718-17, Consider and Take Action Regarding Appointment of the Town Attorney.
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to suspend the request for the proposal, the RFP process for town attorney until March 2019.
Is there any discussions?
Yep. I just want to, I know there's been many conversations around the town attorney, and coming into the council back in November, it's at the council's pleasure whether or not to appoint the current town attorney or to look somewhere else. I know there were debates with the entire council body where everyone had an opinion who should be the town attorney, and I think the decision was made to go through the RFP process. I think with everything on the plate at the town, we felt it was important to hold off and not make any rash decisions. But then we decided that this is something that could be done at the end of the year, and with the town manager handing in his resignation, retirement, we decided that it wouldn't be wise to go ahead with all the changes currently with the town to change town attorney. In my opinion, I think from the committee perspective, it's if you think about it when it comes to town attorney, a lot of folks may have different opinions on the role that a town attorney plays, but I believe what's important for that town attorney, especially with a new town manager, to have some sort of continuity coming in. So with a new town, with a new town manager, I think it was important for us to stay the course with the current town attorney regardless of how we may feel about the matter, and I think that was the right decision that the committee made and referral here tonight. So I'm hoping that my colleagues would see where we're coming from on the matter and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Any other items for Councilor McLarry?
So I find this very interesting, and I heard it tonight that this is political. It is political, and I think some members of this council are being very political about this issue, and I would like to just give you a historical context of how we got here. So on November 13th, we had our first council meeting, and I made a motion to move forward, to refer to admin the AME Committee. It was tabled. And it was tabled at the time, because I, this weekend I went back and I looked at the minutes and I read it, and so I'm very, very excited about it because it tells the true picture of how political this is and how people are playing a game with the town attorney and delaying it. So they tabled the item. So the very next meeting, I read the Robert Truitt Order, and it said if an issue is not brought up that was tabled, you can't bring up the issue for the future. So I made another motion to untable the item and refer to committee to start the discussion on what we're going to do for the town attorney. That motion died 252, with two people standing, Councilman Goff and Councilman Mann. Then there was a motion by Councilor Merritt, and it was second by the deputy mayor to table the item again, and that vote was 7-2. So then, nothing happened. Quiet. December 11th is when, a year from tomorrow, is when this council brought up the issue to move the item to Subcommittee. And from December to January 8th, there was no discussion, and then it came up, excuse me, January 2nd, then it came up in Subcommittee and was voted out of the Subcommittee unanimously to move it to RFP. And with the recommendation that the council will receive, five recommendations from a subgroup that consisted of the mayor, the deputy mayor, and one council member. Other councilors had opinions that we wanted to sit on the council, on that committee to see the process through, but they voted out of committee. We respect that process because they said we were going to go to RFP. I know I'm going to be very long because I want to give the history. Then we got received only three recommendations, and then when they voted it out on January 2nd, it wasn't until August 17th when the RFP was published and put out. August 17th, so between January and August. It took that long to get out a RFP. I don't know where it got caught up in the minutia, but I felt like it was being delayed for a reason. Then, when the RFP came out, it was supposed to be, the proposals would due September 13th. September 26th, the proposals were supposed to be reviewed by the Subcommittee and brought to the full council, and then a recommendation, and we were supposed to select the town manager, town attorney on October 22nd for the councils to move forward with the town attorney. I heard, I attended the meeting last week, and I heard a number of things about, we have multiple processes going on, and it would be irresponsible for this council to make a decision. So I want to educate the public on the process. So the council will be interviewed on December 17th from our consultant. We hired a consultant to hire a town manager. On December 17th, we will be interviewed. We all selected some slots this past weekend, and then on that night, from 7 to 8 in executive session, Randy will meet with the full council. On December 18th and 19th, the community has an opportunity to go out and express their concerns of what they're looking for at town manager.
Madam Mayor, just a point of reference, I think Councilman McLarry is confusing to process.
No, I'm not confusing. Can I finish? Can I finish? Madam Mayor, can I finish, please?
Point of order, can we stay on topic?
We are staying on topic.
I think we're talking about town manager process, and I think we're going to.
It's context. It's providing context to my overall. It's providing context to my overall.
Madam Mayor, point of reference, please, can we just stay on topic?
So can I finish, Madam Mayor? I respect everybody else. I would like to finish my.
Point of order, can we stay on topic?
I would like to finish my thought, please.
Councilor Clary, you're, you're giving a timeline? Is that what?
I'm almost finished. Yes, I'm giving a time, I'm giving the perspective that the town, the town council does not play a significant role right now in the town attorney's search. Once we're interviewed on the seventeenth, then she goes to the public, and then she goes to the town staff, and then she works on developing a proposal to put out a job description for the town attorney. There's no major, there's no major process for us to do because on the seventeenth, she's going to come to us, and then that's it until we get the applications in and it closes. So to stop the process and say that we cannot handle a town attorney at the same time is just, it's ridiculous. Secondly, we started a process, and we have, we have applicants, and we have the current town attorney in the pool. So if the town, if these, excuse me, if these candidates are not what we're looking for, then honestly, Mr. Rip, it was Deputy Mayor Sid Schulman who said at one meeting, we need to look at the history of the town manager, of the town attorney. We need to look at the experience and whether they have the capability to do what we want. And I believe that, right? And so when we go through this process, finish this process. And if these candidates are not what we want, then we just go out to another referendum. There's no need to stop this process. It's not, it's not transparent, it's playing a political game, and I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Marshall, did I see your hand up?
There's no reason.
Yes, you did see my hand up, but most of what I was going to say actually supports what Council, Councilman McLeary has already said. And as far as I am concerned, this counselor, it makes absolutely no sense to stop the process now when in fact you already have an attorney who's in the pool. Why, why put it all together and get the town or the council involved with selecting a town attorney, going through the process, and then throw the brakes on? And in my opinion, if there is a new town attorney that is selected, it would be best that that person, he or she, come on board while this man, town manager is still here. That only makes sense because now you're, you're putting in experience and the history with the town manager, and you're sharing that with the town attorney. And who knows whether or not this incumbent attorney is going to be someone new or someone we already have? It just, it seems like a waste of resources in my best opinion, and I would vote against it.
Any other comments? Councilor Goff.
I attended the Admin Education meeting last week. I'm very torn on this because I, I too, at that meet, well, I am of the opinion that the process is in, is in place and we should finish the process. Thank you, Councilman McLeary, for giving us the timeline. I think my biggest thing with the timeline is why, when we decided in January to go out with an RFP, that we did not, you know, we did not do that process till August, and that, of course, was not the council. But that, that's neither here nor there at this point. Last week at the Admin Education Committee meeting, I thought that the councilors on that committee expressed, expressed lots of opinions about this and did hash this out to some degree. And while I was not, I would not have supported the motion that was originally on the table simply to suspend the process, the fact that that was amended to suspend the process until March, I think that was trying to come to a reasonable compromise between the feeling that people are overwhelmed at this point and the feeling that we should get this done and completed. So given, given that proviso that the process will restart in March, which I fully expect to happen, and be completed at that point, I, I do tend to, I, I will, you know, I will vote for this at this point in time. But I think that, you know, I think that our whole point in this process to begin with was to take the town attorney position out of the political patronage category and not have town committees opining on who the town attorney was and to get a professional law firm, to choose a professional law firm on the basis of qualifications. And I think we need to complete that process, and that's where we are now. Thank you.
Are there any comments?
So at this time, there is a motion on the floor to, to suspend the request for a proposal for the RFP process for the town attorney until March. All in favor?
All in.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
You know, you're going to need a selection. I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
So we have one opposition and two abstentions, and one, two, three, four, five ayes. So the motion carries. Considering take action regarding ordinance on veteran's tax exemption.
Madam Mayor, move to schedule a public hearing on January fourteenth, 2019.
Second.
Any discussions?
Yep. Put me in support of this.
I just want to say I fully support this, and hopefully we can, the public will agree with this and support our veterans. Thank you.
Any more discussions? Councilor Mann.
Yes, I think the, this came up a few months ago. The idea is a wonderful idea. It's, it's taken some time to get the language correct because there are federal and state citations and codes that had to be included, as well as concern for survival, for surviving spouses. And I think it's, the resolution we have at hand now is, is ready for action, and I'm ready to vote for it.
Any other, any other discussions? All in favor?
All in.
Any abstentions?
No. I'm voting no.
Okay. Any needs? No? Motion carries. Eighteen nineteen dash twenty-five, discussion and possible action regarding tobacco twenty-one.
Madam Mayor, I move to abort the attach, attach resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Yeah.
Councilman McLeary.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, my God. Your hand was up, so I saw it. I know.
All right, all right. I'll vote. So I, I hope that we, I guess this is, I guess a good faith effort. It will be sent to the General Assembly and will still not have, students will still be able to purchase tobacco. I hope that the West Hartford, Bloomfield Health District can work on the enforcement issue that was brought up in, in committee so we can adopt the ordinance and move forward with this because the number one preventable causes of death is cancer, and that is because of the tobacco, and we need to protect our youth. Again, this is a good faith effort, but I would like to work on the actual ordinance. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this resolution do have the ability to send a message to our state legislators that Bloomfield do support this. I think it's about time for our legislators to make the hard decision on doing what's right, if they believe this is the right thing. I do not believe that the town of Bloomfield should get into the business of passing ordinance here where it gets very complicated, especially when we share a health district with West Hartford, who is not currently right now talking about this issue. And I believe there's a lot of complications with crossing border lines in regards to this. So I think this do have the ability to send a message, and I think it's going to do that. So I strongly support this, and I hope that we can move forward.
Councilor Marshall, Nellie.
Did you want to go first? Thank you. I, I, I don't understand the delay that will happen as a result of sending this to legislation. I completely disagree with Deputy Mayor, that, that, you know, the statement that he just made because as, as a town, we can have whatever ordinances as a town that we, that we agree upon. Bloomfield has many ordinances that West Hartford does not have or Windsor does not have, and it only seemed right that we get in front of the curve and prevent our kids as much as possible from starting that bad habit of utilizing tobacco products. If anyone did any research on the vaping cigarette, that little liquid that you, you have attached to that equates to an entire pack of cigarettes. The kids that are getting this are mostly, primarily receiving it from an eighteen-year-old who is eligible to purchase this. I do not understand why the town, why this council doesn't agree to just go ahead and pass the ordinance. If I was the West Hartford Health District, Health District, I would have said, absolutely, we need to do this as soon as possible, regardless of whether it's in West Hartford. This is Bloomfield. This is what we're doing for our town. When we ran for office, we said we were going to do what was best for our town. We didn't say we were going to look at West Hartford and see what they were doing and then decide what we were going to do. We decided that we were going to stand firm on our town. And it just kills me that whenever we're trying to do something for our town, we're now looking into other towns to see how they're doing it and follow suit with them. So in my opinion, I believe that we're dropping the ball on this by submitting a resolution instead of going ahead as a council and passing the ordinance.
Councilor Merritt.
Unless I misunderstood things, but I understand that we, that we are planning to draft an ordinance in town. Am I incorrect in that?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you then. I hope we're not going to completely sit on this and do nothing. That doesn't concern me. I understand some of the concerns of the Health District. I'm a former chairman of the Health District. I understand the problems. I, I think there's a prejudice against Hartford, and they're the ones that passed it the first time. But anyway, I, I think, I don't think this should be such a big fuss about enforcing it. I think just passing it is ninety percent of the ballgame and just saying, I'd be in favor of stopping all sale of cigarettes, period, in town. They kill more people than anything else. It just seems ridiculous. I suspect there's going to be a nationwide law on this sooner or later. And, but the practical problem is unless towns pass it, that's how Massachusetts passed it, by, by a number of towns passed it, and that embarrassed the state into passing it because they have lobbyists keeping them from doing anything. So I would strongly encourage us to keep going, and it's not, it's not an emergency on, on the ordinance itself, and be leaders in this. I don't think there's a problem with West Hartford, and I suspect they'll join us before long.
Deputy Mayor, and then, oh, Councilor Mann, and then Councilor Goff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I think there's some misinformation here. The resolution wholeheartedly supports the twenty-one, Tobacco Twenty-One Initiative and indicates further that the Bloomfield Town Council continues to work towards adoption of a local ordinance, which will prohibit the sale and distribution of tobacco products, nicotine delivery systems, et cetera. I think some of the initial proposals that we heard were supportive, but like every, like, like the Veterans Health Ordinance, like any other ordinance that has a fiscal consequence, that has an enforcement consequence, we can't just say, okay, we're going to pass it and then worry about how it works out later. That's irresponsible.
I'm sorry.
And I think we need, we've, we've had these meetings at, on several occasions. In fact, one, the, the, the one important meeting was when the West Hartford, Bloomfield District showed up and said they don't have the capability, they don't have the enforcement mechanism to carry this out if they were given the responsibility. So now it's the next step is, how do you, what do you do from there? You go to the next step and see, okay, what's lacking? We need to get our police department involved. It's not impossible, but we can do that. We need to get perhaps another person at the West Hartford District or pay more locally to make that happen. That's not impossible. We can work that out, but we don't know what the consequences are. This has only been two months, took Hartford four months to get to where they are, and they still haven't done anything necessarily about this. So I think we're acting responsibly. We're showing our, our colors as to what we want to do, and we're showing responsibility as to say, we have to figure out how to do it and do it right, otherwise it's not going to have any effect.
Councilor Goff.
Yes, actually, I just wanted, I wanted to echo what Councilor Merritt said. There is a chicken and egg thing here. That is, it's all very well and good to ask the legislature to do something, and I think that's a good first step in, in, in starting a process. But I also think the fact is, the legislature gets tons of stuff every year of people asking them to do this and that, and unless they have a reason to get involved, they're not going to. So when we, when this first was brought up a couple of months ago, when we had people here talking about T21, there was a gentleman who gave the history of how the, the age to buy tobacco products got, got lifted from sixteen to eighteen. And the way it happened was towns around the state started passing ordinances to raise the age from sixteen to eighteen. And once you had, I, he did not give the actual critical mass number for that, but once you got to the point that there were a certain number, and the legislator is sitting there and they're going, well, these towns do this, these towns do this, people can drive from one to the other, they said, we need to make, we need to take action to, to get uniformity. So while I think the resolution is a good first step, the resolution also says that we are going to start working on this. It will take time. As Councilor Mann said, this is not something you write down and the next day pass because there are things we need to do with it. But we need to get going on that because that's actually what's going to make the legislature act. Thank you.
Once again, there's this false sense of it's okay to pass ordinance and, you know, we'll get our state legislators to move. There was a case in, in South Windsor where the current mayor, who was at that time a councilperson, brought forth an ordinance to stop CVS from selling cigarettes and didn't get the support of the full council. The discussion around that was, where do we stop when it comes to passing these ordinance to regulate, to tell, in this case, someone whether or not an eighteen-year-old who has a right to, to buy a house, to go to war? See, it's, it's okay to have these discussions, but we have to be honest with ourselves of the implications it's going to have. I understand when it comes to whether or not, to what's the reason behind smoking cigarettes. I don't smoke. I'm not a smoker. I don't want my young kids, I have an eight-year-old and a ten-year-old, I don't want them to smoke, but I believe there's an education component to it that would work. So my whole thing is, I would like to caution my colleagues, instead of just rushing to pass an ordinance just so it's a good field type of thing, I think we have to be careful. I think we have to be responsible, and we have to be intentional. So I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say that if we pass a resolution, it's not going to do the job. I don't agree with that. South Windsor had a point where CVS decided to make a decision not to sell cigarettes in their store, and everyone followed, and they didn't pass an ordinance, it was a resolution. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so, just to add some information here before we take a vote, I know that the FDA, a few weeks ago, just banned the sale of e-cigarettes in gas stations and things like that. So I do believe that there is some traction, and I do believe that we are committed to working with our Health District and everyone else who's going to be involved in the enforcement of this ordinance to make it work for our town. So I don't think if we pass the resolution, it's a stopgap. I think it's another step on the way to the process. And, and I just brought up the FDA because everyone's looking at it, right? So by the time we get to the process, it should be an easy thing because, once again, the FDA is the one who regulates. They go in, they do their own surveillance and investigations, doesn't come out of our pocket. So if they come and do it, that's the best people to do it, but we're still going to do what's in the best interest for Bloomfield. So thank everybody. We can see that this is a very hot topic. Now can we please take a vote on the resolution? All in favor? All in favor? All those opposed? One abstention. Everyone else is in favor? Motion carries. 1819-28, consider and take action regarding approval of council schedule for 2019.
Madam Mayor, can we move the motion on all of these together or do you have to separate?
Let's do it together.
I think we could probably do it together. Okay. So that would be the approval of the council schedule for 2019. That would be the subcommittee meeting schedules for 2019 as well as, is that it?
I think that's it.
I thought there was one for the, there wasn't one for the...
No, this one was the budget.
That's what I was looking for. Is that separate?
Separate.
Okay, so that's under new business. Okay, so can, can I have a motion for those two? Okay. Is there, okay. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any oppositions? We got one unanimous vote. Okay, that might have been it, right? 1819-34, consider take action regarding tax abatement for total wall systems.
Madam Mayor, the Finance Committee took this up. This was a tax abatement as a result of total wall system being in the Connected Enterprise Zone program in Bloomfield. There were some, I guess, screw-ups in terms of filings and who got paid when. We actually sent this to Finance Committee more to understand what was going on and to understand the enterprise zone than, than, than any real issue with paying the, the abatement amount that we deserved, that we were indebted to pay. So when this went to the Finance Committee, we ultimately voted, recommended to bring it back to council with a unanimous vote, and at this point, I would move that we approve, that we approve the reimbursement of abated taxes for total wall systems under the Bloomfield Enterprise Zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Councilor Mann?
Just one question. It's pretty clear in here that the state is supposed to give a 50% refund, but that there's also clear that they may not be able to do that or may not guarantee that refund. If that were the case, is the town still obligated for the next seven years to continue its, its, its abatement, or is this program default?
Can I answer that? Or at least to the degree I can. The issue of why we're not getting the 50% back right now is actually, this was not a this-year item, this was like two years ago, and it fell through the cracks. So we are going to ask the state to reimburse us for the 50% that they are supposed to pay. Because it is a past year, there is some question that they may not pay. To the degree that we have other instances in the enterprise zone, total wall going forward for the rest of its abatement, we should get reimbursed by the state for that. So that should not be a problem going forward.
But we also have the opportunity to negotiate what we do, right?
Well, yes, no, the statutory aspects are pretty steep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? New business. 1819-35, consider and take action regarding the Metropolitan Commission Resolution Long-Term Control Plan. I'm going to ask the town manager to speak for this before we take a vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, I had suggested that perhaps we should take seriously the MDC's presentation that they provided us back in November regarding the long-term control plan, the integrated plan that they had talked about. There've been a number of discussions and motions that have been talked about among council members and the MDC and so forth in terms of supporting this. I think it's important that we realize that despite the DEEP's letter from a year ago, their interests are environmental. Their interests do not include concerns about what Bloomfield residents have to pay for water and sewer service. So the DEEP is doing exactly what they feel they should do, and I don't think anybody should look otherwise. They're concerned with environmental issues, and that's their approach to the issue. The MDC, on the other hand, looks out after eight communities, and that's their purview, eight towns that are participating in that particular program. And they're looking out at the obligations that they have under their charter and special acts regarding water and sewer. And then there's Bloomfield, and I think Bloomfield has to be very concerned with Bloomfield residents and Bloomfield's role in the MDC, and also with the DEEP. But I think that we need to take seriously the MDC's request for some form of support to negotiate with both the DEEP, or I should say, the State of Connecticut, and potentially with the Environmental Protection Agency over the consent decree that was previously approved. We have to remember that the Clean Water Program was approved by all of the voters in the MDC catchment area back almost 15 years ago now, and things may have changed somewhat in terms of the age of the existing sewage system and the existing finances. A lot of what is before you this evening was generated by the City of Hartford's warning notice to the MDC that they may not be able to make their required payments to support the water and sewer systems that the MDC runs, and that the other, this was two years ago, and that the MDC then looked to the other seven towns to pay for the City of Hartford's potential default. You may remember that the town of Bloomfield, and this may not be as fresh in your mind, but we had to take over $600,000 of our fund balance and reserve it with the idea that that would be Bloomfield's payment to offset Hartford's default. As it turned out, Hartford did not default. They made their payments and so forth, and, and the balance was relieved on, on Bloomfield and the other seven towns. However, this did raise the, the fact of how we pay for sewers. And right now, the MDC sends out 32 bills, quarterly bills to eight towns. So that's eight times four is 32 bills, and the town of Bloomfield pays approximately over a year, about $3.3 million to the MDC out of our tax revenue that is, is levying on our residents. In response to the Hartford financial situation, the towns have petitioned the MDC to move the sewer ad valorem rates, the 32 bills that the eight towns get, and to put that onto the consumer, so that homeowners would now pay for sewer service directly, and the towns would be relieved, in Bloomfield's case, of $3.3 million. This is designed to allow the MDC to go ahead and complete their, delay the, the certain aspects of the Clean Water Program and defer that program to outer years and return spend funds that they would have collected on the town, on the MDC sewer system, the aging infrastructure that's in place. So I think with that kind of background, while the resolution that's accompanying the agenda this evening is one of three or four that are floating around, I think the idea here is that the MDC will be negotiating with the State of Connecticut, DEEP, over the current financing and construction of both the provisions of the consent decree between the MDC and the state, as well as the future sewer operational funds needed to maintain and replace the infrastructure that's currently in place. I think the key word in all of these recommended resolutions of the MDC and so forth is the word "concept." And I think what we're looking at this evening is whether we agree that there should be some form of discussion and concept concerning a different template for the funding of the, of the sewers and, and essentially the environmental commitments that have been made by both the MDC and the state and indirectly by the town. So that's a long-winded explanation of, of some background material, but also where we are this evening.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt the attached resolution. We adopt the attached resolution.
Is there a second?
I have a few questions. Maybe the town manager can answer this or our attorney who's in the building now. Does this adoption of this, first of all, how many other member towns have adopted this? Or the same resolution as that?
It's just a resolution.
How many other towns approve this resolution? And that's MDC member town?
I don't know of any at the present time. The MDC will be voting on the resolution, a resolution, let me put it this way, or on the Integrated Plan later this month at their board meeting.
Okay, so to your knowledge, there's none who supported this, right? So we will be the first, right?
They have not taken any action. Doesn't mean they've supported it or they voted against it.
Okay. Second question, and then I'll get to my comments. Does this long-term, the, the support of this long-term integrated plan, does that tell or send signals to the MDC that if they need to go out to borrow in 2019 or 2020, that we support that borrowing of extra money to increase the infrastructure, to, to, to improve the infrastructure for the MDC? So if they need to go out for another 20 or 30 million, or 100 million, or 500 million, does supporting this long-term integrated plan say we agree with that?
It basically means that the MDC, regardless of whether we do anything or, or not, the MDC will be borrowing more money because they have not, don't have the financing in place either to meet the current agreement or to undertake the infrastructure improvements that need to be taken. The Integrated Plan would essentially reduce and phase, if you look at the background material, would, would reduce the amount of borrowing that they would have to do, but it would not stop the amount of borrowing.
So just to, just to clarify, I think Council McCleary was saying, if we pass this resolution, are we endorsing them borrowing more money? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, that's my question.
Yes.
Oh. Okay, thank you.
Well, I wonder if the maker of the motion would consider an amendment? I think the only thing that's been consistent here is the word "concept" that the managers pointed out, and that was the concept that was presented to us about the Integrated Plan, which was different than the status quo plan, because it offered to replace a lot of the existing infrastructure that was deteriorated, instead of spending a lot of years and a lot of money on building a new tunnel to create a storage, underground storage area for some of the stormwater and sewage, which satisfies my need as a municipal leader to make sure that those existing facilities are going to be taken care of. That was the concept. The concept also, the way they developed the concept, was to reduce the initial costs to the community. It might be a little bit longer run out, but longer is better if it's, if the cost is, is reduced upfront, and clearly they indicated that. It's a concept. I would be willing to accept this resolution if it stopped at the word "concept." I think as it goes further, it authorizes, it suggests that we urge the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and State of Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection to approve the plans as submitted. Well, I really don't feel comfortable telling them to approve the plans. We didn't see what plans they're specifically talking about except "concept." And if we're talking about "concept," I think we should stop at the word Metropolitan District's Long-Term Control Plan, and I think that really supports the concept.
Well, actually, yeah, yeah. Slow your roll. Slow down.
Madam Mayor, I accept a friendly amendment by my colleague.
So, just, just a question, because Council McCleary brought it up. I just want to understand. So whether it's concept or no concept, this resolution is still basically saying that we endorse them.
That's right.
So, so whether you want to play wordsmithing or not, it goes, I'm just talking about Council McCleary just said. So you slow down a little bit too, just to understand what I'm saying. Council McCleary talked about us endorsing money. Is that what you're saying? And I'm saying that whatever, whatever we vote on, "concept," "stop at the period," or "go all the way to the next sentence and stop at the period," it brings us back to the same thing. Is that your understanding, Council McCleary?
Yeah, we're telling them that we endorse the...
All right. I just wanted, I just wanted to, just wanted to get that clarified. Councilor Merritt?
I'd like to point out that they're going to borrow the money anyway, probably. So it's, we've been there before with them, and they have to, they have to do something, and, and this is at least means they'll borrow less than if they put that big tunnel in right away. And my hope would be, I think the only thing that's going to happen, that can happen, I'm not sure it's going to, in Washington in the next two years, is a bill that might include infrastructure repairs because it happens to be something both parties agree on. And this certainly would qualify for that, and I would hope it would be included. And I would much rather the federal government pay for this than the people of Bloomfield. And I think it's, I would be, we would be very unpopular if we went ahead and built this tunnel and spent an extra billion dollars or so of our own money and then had the federal government come and, and give money to the city of Springfield, who is also dumping stuff in the river and messing things up, and other, and other cities into ending up in our, in Long Island Sound. So I, I think, I don't think we have much choice but to support this. At least it is going to cost us a lot less than the tunnel, which is of dubious value anyway. And so I, I think, other than beating up on the MDC, which would be a pointless exercise, I think we should support it.
So, Councilor Marshall, noon.
I just have one simple question. Is there anyone else on this dais who wants to take a look at the document that Brad Klein was talking about, other than me?
Madam Mayor, by coincidence, the document that Brad Klein said is the same one I sent out last night.
In the email.
So it's in your email.
Okay.
And it is a very persuasive document.
So, oh, so with, with that document, are we still thinking that this is a good thing to vote this resolution in based on that data that he has provided? I, I'm just asking. I want, I want...
Madam Mayor, can I respond?
That's the only person who read it, yeah.
That's the only person. Is that a yes?
Go ahead.
I want, what is...
Can, can I have a very brief response?
Yes. As the resolution now stands with the amendment, the resolution is "be hereby resolved that the town of Bloomfield, acting herein through its town council, expresses its support for the incorporation of an integrated planning concept into the next revised version of the Metropolitan District's Long-Term Control Plan." That document says several times that the Department of Environmental Protection strongly supports the notion of doing integrated planning, but it also says that they need to do that within the context of the requirements for the consent order. So it is consistent.
Okay. Council McCleary, very brief, very brief.
Just a quick question. So, and maybe this is for Phil. So I'm just... They're stuck on going out to borrow more money, right? I know it's going to happen anyway. But when they do do it, if we vote this in, can they say, oh, yeah, we borrowed this money and the Bloomfield Town Council supports it because they, they supported the long-term complaint? Long-Term Control Plan Resolution. So can they say that? Or is that, you can't, I know it's hypothetically, hypothetical, you can't answer that, but is that the potential for them to say, could there be a potential for them to say that we support the borrowing because of that?
What I anticipate is that the town's support...
this money, and the Bloomfield Town Council supports it because they supported the long-term complaint, Long-Term Control Plan Resolution." So can they say that? Or is that, you can't, I know it's hypothetically, hypothetical, you can't answer that, but is that the potential for them to say, could there be a potential for them to say that we support the borrowing?
What I anticipate is that the town's support will be used by the MDC to negotiate with the DEEP at the State of Connecticut over a resolution regarding exactly what Counsel Merritt was saying, the tunnel concept versus the infrastructure concept, okay? And the tunnel concept and the consent order as it's now constructed, is going to be more expensive than the integrated plan. They're both expensive, don't kid yourself, you know? We're going to see increases every year in the ad valorem rates, we're going to see increases in, probably in water rates, as we, as the MDC works through this consent agreement that they have. But they're going to be negotiating this, and the DEEP has kind of outlined, at least a year ago, their position on it, and that's going to be the MDC's challenge, to negotiate something with them. But I think we need to support the concept, again, of doing something to let people, let them know that we care. That puts us at the table. If we don't do anything, yes, we're still a member of the MDC, and we're still citizens of the State of Connecticut, and we're concerned about our environment. But if we at least passed a resolution on the concept idea, that gives us a seat at the table to better negotiate what we want to see in any integrated, long-range plan as it goes forward.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Is everybody have the same language, the revised?
We're voting on the amendment.
Amendment, yeah.
Right? We're voting on the amendment? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Two. All right. 1819-36, consider and take action regarding adoption schedule budget meetings. Is there a motion, is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? 1819-37, consider and take action regarding tax refunds.
Madam Mayor? I move that we accept the list of recommended refunds from the finance director, and these refunds be approved?
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? 1819-38, consider and take action concerning proposed settlement of pending litigation.
Oh, that's an executive.
I think that's for potentially after we...
Oh, after, okay, after tomorrow, okay. So, report from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things. One, everybody should know that we're entering into budget season, and capital budgets from department heads, agencies, boards, and commissions are due in shortly. Those will be followed by the operating budgets. We'll be setting up a series of meetings just to start on the budget process in January. Just as a quick overview, the public hearing for the FY 1920 budget will be in March, and the town meeting will be, and annual budget meeting will be the first Monday in May. Those may seem a long way out, but it moves along rather rapidly here now that we've started. The town will be issuing a bond issue on the 17th of January. Our finance department and finance director will be working on that shortly, so that's some additional debt that the town will be taking on. That has all been factored in. The bond issue is to help fund, really, the human services facility on Park Avenue, and our expansion and renovation of the public works facility on Southwood Road. There was a story in the newspaper, the local paper, the Bloomfield, actually it was the Windsor paper, I guess, this week, about tree cutting up at the Bloomfield, by Eversource, up at the Bloomfield substation. I just want to let counsel and everybody know that myself have, along with Eversource representatives and local property owners primarily, one of them who's adjacent to the substation, have been working with Eversource, and we hope to have a reasonable replanting plan that will be developed shortly to take care of the trees that have been cut down, which were substantial in size, and Eversource was worried that they might come over into the substation. So if you're reading that article, you know that we have been working with the local property owners and the power company to come up with a resolution to the issue. And that completes my report.
Thank you. As was stated earlier, we have engaged Randy Frank as the executive search firm for our town manager, and trying to make sure that we have input from everyone. There will be two public sessions, one on the 18th from 1:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m., and that will take place at the senior center at 3:30 Park. And the next one will be on the 19th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that will take place at the Bloomfield High School library. So please come out and be a part of the conversation as we look for a new town manager. I would also like to thank the Active Day group for the wonderful holiday arrangements. India, can you pass me the holiday arrangement? They made these and donated them to the town hall, just to give us a little bit of holiday spirit, and I think they're so, so very nice. Actually, people asked if they could purchase these, and we didn't have that information, it was just a donation, right? And they stated that they would, India, that they would, sorry, donate again once the season is over, so we just really wanted to tell them thank you very much for a job well done. Also, on the 22nd, will be the holiday luncheon at the church in the center of town that starts at 11:00 a.m., so if there's anyone in need, or anyone would like to just come out and have a holiday, a holiday lunch, please come out and do so. If you want to also come and volunteer, help out, that would be great as well. So with that, we're going to have our council comments, and we're going to start with, nope.
Approval of minutes.
We're going to approve our minutes. Geez, I'm just trying to rush this meeting over. So we have our number, November 13th meeting minutes. So I already had a, I already had a movement, I already had a second, so let's just vote.
Aye.
All right. November 26th. I have, okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council comments. Counsel Waterhouse.
Hi, thank you for coming out and saying... Yes, I need that. Just so, I don't know if everybody knows, but December 15th, this Saturday between 10 and 1, Santa will be at our farm. They're going to do the animals and some crafts and everything, they'll have hot cocoa and warm soup. It's $10 per family, so please show up. It will be amazing and a lot of fun. Also, our, one of our new local restaurants, Sloppy Waffles, will also be doing pancakes with Santa this same day, from 1 to 2:30, so you can slide right into both of them and get fed.
I can fall into both of them.
That's true. And other than that, I wish everybody a happy holiday and stay safe.
Counsel Marshall Neely.
Yes, so it's all right.
Okay. It's so good to be back in this seat. I was not well, and I was not here, but I won't go into that. Congratulations to the Bloomfield High School Warhawks football team. You are amazing, amazing. And I'm hoping that someone from that football team will go to my alma mater, Delaware State College. Two phenomenal women in Bloomfield deserve my attention and my applause, and I respect them more than they could possibly know. I just want to thank both of them for their wisdom, for their time with me, breakfasts, or any kind of discussions that we've had, their sincerity. And this is Barbara Reisner and Ann Wall. You actually took a lot of time with me, and I, I know who you are internally and externally. And I just want you to know that I appreciate everything that you've done, and I take my hat off to you, kudos to you. And last, with regard to the town attorney situation, I, I'm so moved regarding this topic, because when the new generation of Democratic leaders decided that they were going to run, one of the first items on their initiative, one of the first items, was to look into what we want to do with regard to the position of the town attorney. And I, I think that, in all honesty, we should have stayed true to what we said we were going to do. And we are so split, so divided, we're like splinters going in all kinds of directions, where we cannot come together and agree on issues that we agreed on when we ran for office. So I'm just hurt that as, as a member of the new generation of Democratic leaders, that we still have an impasse, and we still can't come together as one. I have my own reasons why I think this is happening, but I would like to see something better happening with the new generation of Democratic leaders in the very near future, so that we can get some, some good work done, that, the work that we said we were going to do. I'd like to see that happen. And with that, happy holidays. Counsel Merritt.
I don't think the Democratic Party would be the Democratic Party if everybody agreed on everything, that would take all the fun out of it.
Says the Republican.
Well, I figure Democrats would say that, too. Anyway, it's, disagreement is very healthy, and I also think that it's, I am, I'm thinking of a current president of the United States who promised a whole bunch of things when he was running for election. I sure wish he changed his mind once he'd gotten elected and learned how stupid most of them were. So I, I, I think, I think to carry out these campaign promises is not necessarily the best thing in the world, once you learn what things are really like when you get onto a, into government. Anyway, going on from there. I thoroughly enjoy the debate, and I see both sides of everything, and I think it's a very healthy discussions are going on. But I, I would like to amend the comments, stop making these comments, and just say how much I wish everybody a happy holiday, and have a good season, and I didn't mean to cause any disruption, I apologize. I enjoyed, I have to tell you, I enjoyed doing all those bucket things that you get a chance to do every once in a while in life, like playing Santa Claus on Sunday, and it was the first time I've ever done that, and I hope it's the last, but it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Counsel McCleary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to start off by congratulating the Bloomfield football team on their victory. I really enjoyed the game on Saturday. Saw the deputy mayor there, and the mayor was there, I think she jumped the fence to take the picture. She's very athletic, don't let her, don't let her fool you, she's very athletic. Just want to address a few things. I know it's like a dead horse, but again, the town attorney is at the council's pleasure. The current town attorney is in the process, let's see the process through. We can't do that because we voted tonight to suspend it. I'm very disheartened that we didn't see the process through, because I think we have some great candidates, and all three would be very good for the town. But I can assure you that in March, the town attorney search is only going to heat up, and we're going to have more stuff to do, and we're going to push it off again, so tonight was the time, and this session was the time to act, because I'm sure come April, May, June, and July, we'll start to get applications, and start to interview folks, and visit, visit different candidates, communities, it's going to only get intense, and I can guarantee you that come March, it'll be pushed off, and no right firm in their right mind will want to apply for the position, because there's only six or seven months left, and we don't know if we're going to have a new council, or what the decision is going to be, so we might as well have, continue down the path and either stay with that current town attorney, or move forward. So I think we missed an opportunity there. I want to talk about community neighborhood parks. I know we invested some money in the Persia Park neighborhood, but I'm very concerned that we'll be talking about over $400,000 for the Farm to River Park, when we have a bunch of neighborhood parks that were nickel and diamond. So again, I said this earlier in the year, I hope we really look at equity and support our neighborhood parks, because if we want younger families to move into town, we have to think about the neighborhood parks in the surrounding, in our local neighborhoods. The next thing I would like to discuss is some, some comments that was brought up earlier that I wasn't able to respond to as it relates to Tobacco 21, saying that, that it is, the general assemblies, they need to get the political will to do something, but we have the opportunity to do the same thing. The issue at hand early on in the discussion was, we didn't have the jurisdiction to do so. Our current town attorney said we did have the jurisdiction to do so. Now we're saying that the town, that the state has to get the political will to do so? Why can't we get the political will and do it locally? Just like every other town and state in this country. It started at the local level, and the state acted because of the local boards and commissions getting the political will to pass it. There was a number of things that was pointed out, saying that it was a fiscal mess, it didn't give, it didn't allow the resources for the Bloomfield-West Hartford District. When the ordinance was first introduced, it was requested that we have a joint committee meeting with Public Safety, A&E, and the Bloomfield-West Hartford District. That was a request not made by mistake, because I knew those were the organizations that needed to be at the table to discuss the ordinance, and have a robust discussion. And members of this council, again, were being political, and they didn't want it to go to that joint committee, because they thought it needed to go to A&E. But now, we go and circle back and go to those same people, that if we originally sent the ordinance to the joint committee, we wouldn't be here today, we would be halfway or nearly through with the ordinance. And I reject the, the notion that we're trying to rush this process through. I'm not trying to rush the process through. No, I don't think any of us is trying to rush the process through, but I don't want to get down the road, just like we did with the town attorneys, oh, we have too much on our plates. So the town now is to act. And I want to finally close with saying happy holidays, hope everyone is, have a blessed one, stay warm, it's really cold. I want to restate that I mentioned earlier by the deputy mayor, that there are some families left to be adopted from social services and youth services, so if you're interested, please contact that department, and be a blessing to your neighbor. Thank you.
Counsel McHaw.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. Warhawks, everyone is thanking them as they go along, that was a great thing. I was even more excited when they beat Ensonia, because I thought that was the big game. But I was very happy when I looked at the paper Sunday morning and saw the result. Again, if people have not read it, Today's Current has a great article on our two retiring registrars of voters, and this is a wonderful story in terms of how people not only did a job together, but created friendship together. So if you don't have the hard copy version, please go out and look online, it's a great story. Friday, I think there will be a, we'll have a ribbon cutting at Royal Main, at the new Hair, Hair Place, I think that's Volpian.
Correct.
So come out, come out and see one of Bloomfield's new businesses. We have heard several times about the town manager search, make sure everyone in the audience, and everyone on, out there at home, this is your opportunity at the start of this, to get your two cents in and to give feedback. This council, one of our main things, is... This council, one of our main things is getting out to the public, getting public input and this is your chance because this is going to be a very, very important hire and will be, you know, will be an important direction for the town for hopefully, knock on wood, years to come. So please make sure you participate. And finally, happy holidays to everybody, whatever you celebrate, now is the season and the cold weather sort of gets you, gets you a little more in the mood. Thank you very much.
Councilman?
Well, I may act like the Grinch because I think that these council comments have to be amended or changed because I think the discussion that we've been hearing and the time that's elapsed is out of order. I think these items were discussed, in fact, they were voted on and, excuse me, they were voted on and there were no opposing votes. There was discussion in which case all these considerations were heard before. I think if we use the council comments as a way of bringing back, regurgitating what we just voted on and give the opposite side, I don't think it's helpful to a community who is now more confused than they were before. It's not helpful then to us who have worked through the process together, whatever way you think it happened, it was done together, there were, there were inputs from people and the vote was taken and I think we have to stand with that and move on. So I would ask the mayor to consider the next time revising the agenda or at least revising the rules with that regard. Not trying to hold people from talking there. Certainly it was primitive time during the discussion to make comments. We don't need to hear them again. Thursday, at one o'clock, there's a concert at the Bloomfield High School. Since we're supportive and happy that the Warhawks won, we need to also support the other groups at the high school, concert groups, musical groups. And it's at one o'clock at the, at the high school library. I also want to mirror the, you know, fellow comments about the two folks who ran our registrar of voters, is rather unusual and rather remarkable story, that was in the paper. ABC for Bloomfield has had some wonderful programs. I've attended three or four of them, most recently is the Conversation of Race at our farm. And I think everybody should be a part of that. In addition to which, it was mentioned that I wanted to see this movie, The Hate U Give.
Hate U Give.
Hate U Give, very powerful, very important for us who live in a, in a community with varying populations, different populations to know how other people think and what's, how, how they respond to things. And that was a very powerful movie, I recommend it for everybody. So I'll end up my Grinch report by wishing everybody a happy holiday and happy new year to everybody.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start off by congratulating, as everyone else did, the Bloomfield Warhawks. I was at my first championship game, I've attended many games, but this was my first championship game and it was exciting to be there with everyone else. I mean, we had a lot of fan base, a lot of folks came out, so if you didn't attend the game, you didn't get to watch it on TV, you missed a really good game. I want to just make a few comments in regards to leadership. You know, when it comes to leadership, you have to make sometimes tough decisions and even though that you may think one thing when you come into a situation, you gain experience during the matter and you have to adjust. If a leader doesn't have the capacity and ability to adjust to circumstances, that's not a good leader. I hate to say that, it's not a good leader. You cannot have these fast grown feelings about certain circumstances. We see clearly what's going on as my colleague, Council, Councilor Merritt mentioned about our current president. You know, he came in with a lot of viewpoints and he's carried out to the detriment of the country. Plain and simple. So leaders have to be flexible, they have to adjust, okay? That's what I want to say about leadership. In regards to feelings, right? You can't have feelings when you're making decisions for the entire town. Your first responsibility is what's best for the town of Bloomfield. I keep saying that every single day from the day I was elected. Doesn't matter your personal little pet project or what you feel, whatever you do, you have to do it in the best interest of the town. I don't say we all have various pet projects or we feel a certain way, you know? I, I sometimes I don't hear people talk about my pet project when it comes to our educational system within, within the town, on certain things, providing resources and stuff to our young folks. We heard tonight from the football team that they have needs. I don't see that passion there, I just want us to be consistent. And that's what I want to offer for my colleagues for 2019. This is our last meeting here for 2018 and 2019 should be consistency in how we do business. Put the feelings aside, we all have feelings, I have feelings, my wife reminds me that every single day. You have to put that aside when you have to make decisions. And it's tough to make some decisions. And when it comes to the town attorney, I don't care what feelings you have, you have to do what's in the right interest of the town. And I believe we made that decision tonight regardless of how you feel. So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. I know we just finished celebrating Hanukkah. And whatever else you're celebrating out there, you know, whatever else you're celebrating out there, wish you all the best, be safe and I look forward to seeing you in 2019. As a matter of fact, I look forward to seeing you out there in public. So thank you and have a wonderful evening.
So, I'm going to say Merry Christmas upfront. Because everyone has, you know, this whole dissertation and then they say Merry Christmas and all that stuff. So we did just celebrate Kwanzaa, I mean, Hanukkah and we're celebrating Christmas and we're going to celebrate Kwanzaa and we're going to celebrate New Year's and we're going to do it gratefully. So, I'm not a huge football fan, but I'm a football fan, you know, Warhawks, woo-hoo, yes. My son played football for years for me, was with the Raiders, then he played for high school. But on Sunday, I was watching the Patriots and Miami game. Did anybody see that game?
Wow.
So let me say, let me, you know, I'm a little dramatic.
It was good.
But I think I need some drama right now because I'm tired. But hey, was watching the Patriots game. I think they only had like, what, seven seconds, five seconds on the game? Patriots got this! Miami had the ball. There's no way Miami's going to win this game. The Patriots got this in the bag. Gronkowski, is that his name? He was at the back, he was waiting to make sure that no one gets in the end zone, am I saying it right? So here go, Miami got the ball and they just kept on moving that ball, moving the ball, moving the ball, moving the ball. Guess what happened? They scored, they won the point, the game by one point. Everybody was speechless. I was sitting on my couch, I said to my husband, there was only seven minutes in the game, how'd they go win the game? He said, darling, as long as the ball is in play, it doesn't matter what the clock says. Why am I telling this story so excitedly?
What?
Because we have come to the end of the year and we're still in play. We may not see eye to eye, we may not have tea together, but we are here and we are still in play. So we're going to go into 2019 and we're still in play. And the important thing is that we do what's in the best interest of our town. That's why I told that story because just thinking about that story gave me a little bit of oomph after hearing everybody else's comments. We were voted in office to do a job. We came in, some of us had on very rose colored glasses, but quickly, those glasses became very crystal clear that there's things for us to do here on behalf of our residents. So I'm asking that we take this time because we will not have another meeting this year, but we take the time to, what is it, reset? Recalibrate?
Recalibrate.
Is that what it is? You know, like if you're going off path, you're in your, your little GPS, it tells you, re-
Reboot.
Recalculating?
Recalibrate.
Recal, that's not what it says.
I'm telling you. Re-center.
Like if you're going off path, it tells you to do something, to re something.
Re-center.
So I'm just going to say, let's, let's re something, let's do that, okay? And with that said, can I, we're going to go into executive session where we're going to discuss pending claims and litigations, proposed settlement of pending litigation, possible acquisition of real property, personal matters concerning the town manager. We're in executive session with the town manager, the assistant to the town manager, our town attorney.
Attorney Monstersky.
And attorney?
Monstersky.
Him. Is there a motion?
A second. Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any positions?
Do you need our Finance Director?
I'm, I'm sorry, our Finance Director is also going to be in executive, no, no, okay, excellent, all right. Two minutes, two minutes, two minutes.